Good evening Commissioners. Again, we're going over the paved private roads and major subdivisions. Work session. I guess I'll introduce myself. So I'm Jared Bedoin, the Public Works Director for Camden County. So we're gonna go over a little refresher on some definitions. So public improvement is the construction, enlargement, or extension of a facility intended for dedication to the public, including but not limited to a street, curb, and gutter, sidewalk, cross drain, catch basin, traffic control, street name sign, or other roadway up pertinence other than a driveway connection. The dedication is the donation by the owner or owners, either expressively or implicitly, and acceptance by the Board of Commissioners for public road purposes in accordance with the statutory or common law provisions. We go by the Unified Development Code in the county. So I have a few codes here that are pertinent to tonight's discussion. UDC Section 1238b1 is acceptance of formal offers of dedication of streets, public areas, easements, and parks shall be by the resolution of the Board of Commissioners. The approval of a final subdivision plat shall not be deemed to constitute or imply the acceptance of any street easement or park shown on the plat. That's just to say that if building development accepts a plat and it states on the plat that, you know, the goal is for the county to take the road on, that isn't set in stone until unless the Board of Commissioners approve it. UDC Section 1237.3, the owner is responsible for compliance with all requirements of the Developmental Code, approval of a final subdivision plat, and acceptance of the public improvements and dedication therein shall not be relieved of the owner of this responsibility. The county requires streets, public areas, easements, and parks to be brought up to the county standards as written in the UDC prior to the county accepting the dedication. A few more UDC codes. UDC Section 1003a and b requiring improvements to minor subs. UDC Section 1007d is design standards for streets. UDC Section 1013, design standards for storm drainage systems. And UDC Section 1002c3e, refusal of dedication offer. So whatever the plat purposes, the dedication of land to public use, and the Public Works Director finds that such land is not required or suitable for public use, the Public Works Director may refuse to approve the said plat, or the Director may require the rearrangement of lots to include the such land. The Director's opinion may be appealed to the Board of Commissioners. So that's basically saying that if a plat is submitted to planning and development, and myself as the Public Works Director sees that there's gonna be an issue with that, I can then bring it up in refusal of the dedication or the plat itself unless it comes back up to you guys, the Board of Commissioners, for further discussion. And then lastly, private well placement. UDC Section 306e is setback for and other requirements for accessory uses and structures. Wells and small pump houses are not affected by the front yard setback and may be placed as provided in the next section that we're gonna describe. So in Section 207, exceptions will be granted only to well houses that are construction over wells located in the front yard, which can be no closer than 10 feet from any street right of way. So what that means is, you know, every house has a setback limit depending on the subdivision and how it was drawn out on the plat. But with that, there is no well or well houses that can be within 10 feet of the right of way of the street. So Camden County's UDC standards for road acceptance, just a little clear view of it. So the right of way, our standard is a right of way of 60 feet is the minimum requirement, which means it's 30 feet from each side of the center of the road. Obstructions, the right of ways must be free of fences, structures, or other obstructions that would impede right of way maintenance. Road conditions, road must be within or at least 20 feet wide and free of imperfections and deterioration. And then the drainage system, the stormwater drainage system must adequately allow water to freely shed off the road without flooding. And then here is Table 10.1, which specifies that for local streets. I have it highlighted. A local street is anything that has 250 less travels, minimum is 60 foot right of way with 20 foot wide pavement, and then some other tangents and other figures when it comes to slopes and cul-de-sacs. And then again, on the right is 60 foot right of way showing you it's 30 feet on each side of the road. It gives a 20-foot road surface, two foot for a shoulder, and then 18 feet wide drainage ditch. And that's the slope, the trough of the ditch, and then the back slope. So first road we'll come up to is Hopewell Point Road. This is located in just north of Woodbine, could be northwest of Woodbine. The road condition is it's in decent shape. It has just minor surface cracking. The shoulders do need to be clipped. There's no major issues, potholes with it, but it is, the problem is, is it is only an 18-foot wide roadway. So it would need to be brought up to the standard of being a 20-foot wide road. Drainage system, it does have open drainage ditches. Culverts and ditches are filled with sediment and really need maintenance, but it really would be just minor work. And right of way obstructions, it's clearly established as 60-foot right of way. And when I, when I say that, it means when I go out there and I can take measurements, I can see that the plats were specifically designed to be not built within that 60-foot right of way, that there is that easement apparent out there. There isn't structures or anything, fence lines in the way. So it is open and clear and easily seen that we could get a 60-foot easement pretty quickly. And there's no obstructions. So when you break down the cost to rehabilitate the pavement, it's roughly $52,000, $53,000. We would need to do research and survey for all the plats. And then the drainage and maintenance. So grand total would be $71,000, 270, 20 is estimated for that for Hopewell Point Road. When you break it down, cost per mile, it runs to about, just about a half million dollars per mile. Mainly that for this road is because we'd have to build the road out almost four feet, two feet on each side, or a foot on each side, I'm sorry, two feet, a foot on each side to get it to 20 feet. So that would be broke down to about $4,193 per lot. Again, that's per lot, not per homeowner, because a lot of these roads don't have every single lot utilized with a home. And then I have a few pictures of Hopewell Point. Some of the concerns I had was the cul-de-sac itself is small for our standard. It's not, it doesn't have the radius that it's supposed to. It's a little short. You can see in the middle picture that the road width is, you know, shorter than 20 feet, and it does need maintenance, it needs shoulder clipping. And then the upper right picture shows that the ditch line and the drainage system is definitely filled with sediment, needs to be cleaned out and maintained. And then next would be Waverly Forest Drive and Forest Trace. This is in northwest Camden County, just outside Waverly. We have .87 miles of pavement there, includes 22 lots. Road condition there, it's in very good shape when it comes to width of the road, and minor cracking is minimal, but there are 14 major areas that has major issues with it, where shoulders are either failing or potholes are significant. And we'll, I'll show those in a few pictures here. The right of way is clear, established with no obstructions. The drainage system is also established, we're just requiring minor maintenance. So cost to rehabilitate this road, to bring it to our standards would be 200, just short of $218,000. That goes to about $250,000 per mile on average, and roughly about $9,900 per lot owner. And then if you can see here in the pictures that there's definitely some significant issues with the shoulder area in 14 different locations on the roadway that would have to be addressed, and that was included with the pricing for the road maintenance. Next is a combo, so Deals Circle North and Beck Street. While they're not exactly the exact same sub, it's two different streets from two different subs. They are right next to each other, and I would be hard pressed to say that the county would accept one and not the other since they were built roughly at the same time period and really have the same conditions. So I paired these together. Between the two, it's .42 miles with 42 lots. The road is 20-foot wide. It has two major issues between the two roads that need to have some pothole work and shoulder work, but only minor surface cracking, so restoration wouldn't be that costly. Drainage system is open, needs some maintenance, and the right of way is established with no obstructions. So with this road, the estimate is $128,485.20. Roughly would break down to about $306,000 per mile, and roughly $3,059 per lot. And here you can see the court on Deals. Circle North has got an issue with wear and tear and deterioration that would need to be addressed. Shoulders need to be clipped, the drainage needs to be maintained. And then on Beck Street, there's a, there's a section there on the shoulder that needs to be addressed as well. Christina Lane, this is over off of Laurel Parkway on the north side, just east of 95. So the road conditions there is a 19-foot roadway. It has three issues that need to be addressed, potholes, and some cross pipes that are, that have some divots in the road. Shoulders need to be clipped, the drainage ditches are there and established, but they do need to be maintained. It does have a 60-foot right of way and with no obstructions. This, this job would require about $125,000 to complete to get it to our maintenance. It roughly breaks down to $367,000 per mile, or $7,350 per lot. And again, Christina Lane looks a lot like Deals Circle, and Beck, it's got open right of way. It's clear, you can see that we can maintain that. It is short, it's only 19-foot wide, so we'd have to bring it up to our standard, adding that foot of width, and then fix the minor imperfections. Holly Haven, and Holly Haven Court is a sub that's south off of Coal Rain, just west of 17. It's got seven tenths of a mile and includes 29 lots. The drainage ditches are open and they are needing maintenance, but they're in pretty good shape. The established right of way is there for 60-foot with no obstructions. The roadway conditions, it's 19-foot wide. So again, we would need to bring that up to our 20-foot standard, and it does have three issues that need to be addressed on shoulders or potholes. So on this street, we're looking at $228,351 as an estimate to get it to our code. That roughly is at $326,216 per mile, and $7,875 per lot. And then a few pictures of Holly Haven. Again, the road is in pretty good shape, so it really just needs minor restoration rehabilitation other than bringing it up to code by widening it and addressing the few concerns that are, that are there with some minor imperfections. Next, we have a combination of a small sub, Brentwood Street, Greenwood Street, and Inglewood, or Edge, I'm sorry, Inglewood, Edgewood Street, or Drive. The road condition, so this is a little different. So Brentwood Street was the original street to the sub. It is only 14-foot wide, and it's not fully paved. It looks like the pavement has really deteriorated to the point where they added stone and dirt themselves to try to get it back up to grade, and it has numerous potholes. The Greenwood, Edgewood area, it's only an 18-foot wide roadway, and it does have a few major issues. The right of way is really not established at all. Fence lines and personal property are in the right of way. We really, you can't see that it has a maintained 60-foot right of way. So that would make it really, really hard for us to take this on without that getting cleaned up. So you'll see in the cost to rehabilitate, I have an area there for right of way establishment, where we would have to get those areas cleaned up, possibly get areas dedicated, get or purchased right of way, so that way the street would be 60-foot wide the whole way through. And then some drainage and maintenance issues as well. So the cost to rehabilitate this, this is just over half a mile of road, 36 lots. It'd be $322,000 to maintain, or to bring it to our code. And that breaks down to about $8,953 per lot owner. And then here you'll see, on the upper left, is Brentwood. So you can see clearly, it's not a 20-foot clearly paved road. It's 14-foot, and it has a lot of issues. It does have issues with right of way distances as well to the front of the property. And then the middle, on the lower left, you can see that you have some homeowners, property owners, that have fence and personal property parked all the way out to the edge of the road. So that would be an issue and a concern. And then there's been some significant pothole issues. So the, in the upper left, that square of pavement that's been redone, we actually, as the county went out there and did that specifically because it was in the driveway of a, of a person that was getting attention with EMS. And they had issues being able to access that driveway, so we had to go out and fix the pothole. All right, next sub would be the Catfish Landing, or landings at Catfish Sub. Has four streets, Catfish Landing Circle, Sandybaum Court, Blackwater Court, and Headwater Court. It's two, two total miles of pavement with 69 lots. It does only have a 19-foot wide roadway. And the other concern that I have with that system is, or that street setup is, it does have three deteriorating bridgeways with wooden guardrails, which would not be to our standard. The sides of the roadway aren't supported very well, and they're failing, and minor cracking is throughout. Right of way is established, but there are those four drainage crossings that would be something that we would be taking on. The ditches are open, and they are able to be maintained just with a little bit of work. The pavement is significant, because it's a large, it's two miles worth of road, and you're having to add that one foot of width and bring up the shoulders up to our standard. And the bridge maintenance is another concern as well, so that's why that's got that line item in there. So the total for that sub at two miles would be $583,360. Really, when you break it down, it's $291,680 per mile, so it is actually on the lower side of cost per mile than some of these other streets that we've seen. And that would break down to $8,455 per lot owner. And then you can see, even just in the entrance, the shoulder there on the entrance, and it's fading and deteriorating and needs work. I got multiple pictures there of the center and the lower left, and then the lower center of the bridgeway for the storm drains that the road traverses and the issues that they have. And then you can see, on the right side, you have the shoulder issue where the shoulder is not up to grade with the roadway, and the roadway is breaking away. Second to last sub would be Riverwalk, which is Paul's Way, Ashbury Court, and Logan Court. This is actually a pretty decent maintained sub. It's 20-foot wide roadway. Does have a couple issues that would need to be addressed with potholes and sinking, but the shoulders need to be clipped, but there's very minor surface cracking there. Has a well-established 60-foot right of way and drainage system. Culverts and ditches are filled with sediment, but needs maintenance, but they can be rehabilitated pretty quickly. Pavement here would be very light because it would be more of a micro-surfacing with some minor repairs, and the drainage and the maintenance would be light. So the estimated total for this sub is $61,283. It is only a quarter mile, and it's 13 lots, so it breaks down to $255,000 per mile, and $4,714 per lot owner. And you can see here, the ditch lines are established, but they are very filled in with sediment. There are some minor imperfections on the shoulder, you can see in the middle and the upper right. And then there was a repair that they made on the one intersection in the lower left that still has an issue that needs to be addressed again. And then lastly, is Timber Ridge Drive. So this is .22 miles of pavement with 22 lots. The road condition, it's only an 18-foot wide roadway. It's very distinct, it has three island dividers that have tree and greenery in between. The cul-de-sac requires major restoration. It is all but lost. It really needs to be, the road grade and the road bed needs to be dug out and redone and regraded, and then a new system put in. The drainage system is the biggest issue here. There is an underground drainage system, but it's inadequate, and it's not, unless I actually scope out the actual underground, but all I can tell you is it doesn't drain properly, and it's very small for the amount of water that it would take in. It's only 12-inch. A new drainage system would require, be required to prevent flooding in that area. There are times that I've been down that road myself during different rain events, and, you know, the entire cul-de-sac was underwater by almost 18 inches at some points. Right of way obstructions is another issue with this road. The 60-foot right of way that's established on the plat is not established out in the road itself. There are fences, there's structures, private wells, all within that 60-foot right of way. So this one would be significantly more to maintain and more to rehabilitate. There's really only two options for drainage. You would need to actually go through and add a ditch system or a new covert pipe system on each side of the road, but in doing so, all the existing utilities are already in that area of the right of way. So you would need to either work around, which I see is almost impossible, you'd almost have to have all of the utilities moved outside of that first 10 feet off the roadway before we could actually do our work. The only other option is, is that the road would actually need to be tore up down the middle and put a drainage system down the middle of the road from, from when it comes off of mush bluff all the way to the court. But in doing so, you're essentially gonna be putting an entire new drainage system in from front to back, and then you're also then gonna have to do an entire new pavement system as you're gonna be excavating that pavement up to do all that work. So the, and this cost to rehabilitate, that's why the number is kind of like a sticker shock. I've gone over it three or four times myself, and I actually visited out there again myself today, just to make sure that the numbers were, were spot on or good in estimate. You're looking at $247,000 to redo that pavement once new drainage system was put in and get it to 20-foot wide. You're looking at $30,000 to properly get right of way establishment. And again, that drainage system to be put in is roughly about $125,000 to put a whole new drainage system in that sum. So estimated total would be $423,500. It would be an estimated $1.925 million per mile at that, that number, and you're looking at about $19,250 per lot owner. And then pictures, I'm just showing you the measurements that we've taken. So on the left, in the upper center, is a wellhouse that's 14 feet off of the roadway. You can see here in the middle, on the lower center, that there's a fence line right up against the roadway. Lower left, or I'm sorry, lower right, you can see there's a wellhouse there. That wellhouse is only nine feet off the edge of the road, and that electrical box is only four feet off the edge of the road. So, and then here's some drainage issues. So you can see that the drainage is kind of rudimentary. It only is 12-inch wide inlets, and a lot of them have obstructions and just don't, don't take the water clearly as well as it needs to. And then there's a few pictures here of the court, where the pavement has just gone beyond. Where, it's all the way down to the, to the road bed at points. So in conclusion, the project total, so the nine different sections of roads that we've went over, the total miles is 5.49, so on all intents and purposes, you can say we've run over, the total miles is five-point-four-nine, so on all intents and purposes, you can say five-and-a-half miles of roadway. In the end, totaling it all up, it would be roughly two-point-one-million dollars to restore and get them all to the county's level of acceptance. And that comes out to about three-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand dollars per mile for restoration. Wasn't able to get, I wanted to get the number of actual taxpayers in the unincorporated area to kind of give you a breakdown, if the county took on this project themselves, what it would break out to per taxpayer, but I wasn't able to get that by the end, by the end of day-to-day. But I'm here for any questions.
I got one.
Yes, sir.
Jared, I think we're supposed to get a water truck, aren't we, from, from the fire department?
Yes, we're waiting for some fire equipment to arrive, and then once, one of the older engines is deadlined or surplus, then we're going to have the opportunity to take that truck, and we're going to try to use it as a covert cleaning truck, yes.
Yeah, and could we, at least, for the, for the time being, because I, I think everyone in, on each one of these roads, every single house has to sign off on this.
Correct.
For the county to purchase these, these roads, am I right?
The county doesn't look at purchasing right-of-way. We look at, we do a survey to all the lot owners. We, we ask in that survey if they're willing to dedicate that sixty, that thirty-foot right-of-way in front of their home to the county, and only if we can get everybody in the, in the subdivision and all the lot owners to acquiesce that property to us, do we then move forward.
Okay. And one other thing, and I know you guys are extremely busy with the storms and everything that just happened, but is there, is there a time when you could kind of start on some of these neighborhoods like Timber Ridge? You know, that basically, you said, has eighteen inches of water. Is there a time that you could at least go through there and start cleaning out these ditches, or what do we do on that?
So the, the problem is, is none of that, none of that property is county property. So for us to go in there, we would be on people's property, actually upsetting, you know, disturbing their property to go through and jet and clean out those drains. So if something were to go wrong, if we were to get a, you know, a nozzle stuck in the pipe, if we were to do any damage, it would be, you know...
We would own it.
We would have, yeah, it would put us on a long, a long ugly path, right?
Okay.
Well, historically, when we've tried to pave roads, I know we've done it, tried twice in the last several years, not all of the homeowners would do it, so that's...
I knew that was a requirement. I just, you know, I just, there was one that I saw in there that, it's, well, actually it was Catfish Creek, right? That's kind of a new subdivision. That's not, that, that's not an old, old subdivision, is it?
No, that was two thousand and five is when the plat was fired.
Well, that's new compared to most of them around here.
Twenty years old is new relatively to a lot of these.
Yeah.
And, and the roadway there wasn't in bad shape, it was just the fact that the shoulders weren't supported, so the roadway was starting to give way on the edges. It wasn't twenty-foot wide. And then the, the drainage crossings was an issue there. With, with the guardrails only being wood, which we would require them to be metal, and then the fact that those, you can see that there's already been some erosion from water, floodwaters on those, those pipelines.
Okay. I know that Trevor's the one that basically called this meeting, and just so everyone knows, he's not here. And he definitely wanted us to meet at a different date, because he lost his mom, what, two days ago?
Just heard of it today, so I don't know.
Yeah, he, it was two days ago, right? So, I mean, we're not going to make, can't make a decision anyway, right?
No, this is mainly for information only right now. The big question is, where will the money come from?
Yeah.
Well, as we all know, in the past, before the county would accept it, they had to bring it up to standards. It's not the county that come up with the money to pay for all of the misfortune. The homeowners of property, whatever, had to be brought up to standards, our standards, before they were accepted.
And that was established because, you know, if you have a homeowners association that's collecting dues, levying, you know, fees to their, to the property owners to maintain roadways, you know, when there's a major issue, they've done that year in, year out as a community. You know, what's to stop them to say, well, why are we collecting funds when we can just let our roads go for twenty years and then look for the county to take them over? You know, it's, it's a bad precedence. That's why I kind of put the option in there as, and just showing what it would cost per lot owner, that if it was something, you know, that the lot owners can take on as a group, I know that was one of the things Trevor had, was, you know, you can't expect, you know, twenty-two lot owners to try to get together and form, you know, form that group to where they get that money. You know, if, if it's an option that the county can look at doing that project, and then putting a tax lien on them to pay back, you know, then it would be that portion, they'd still be doing it, but it would be us giving them the opportunity or that option to do. But again, it's all up to, it's all up to you guys.
Yeah. Yeah. This is, kind of ties in with some of the drainage situations and some of these subdivisions that were built long ago to lesser standards, and, and now, you know, we get beat up because it's not draining, and it was because of what happened in the past.
And a lot of it is piggybacking. So, you know, a sub might have been established, twelve-inch corrugated metal, and it was fine for when the sub was designed, but then the, the sub expanded, doubled in size, or a neighbor sub hooks into the same storm system, using the same outfalls, will, now, you know, subs are dumping more water into that, those drains that aren't supported with the twelve-inch pipe that was originally put in, so that's where we're seeing a lot of failures. We, I mean, we were in mush bluff already, doing some work in Elliott Plantation area, found the exact same thing, that, you know, originally it was fifteen-inch pipe underground, and it just wasn't, it wasn't cutting it anymore. It needed to be upgraded to eighteen. We were trying to upgrade it to twenty-four, but the, the coverage just wasn't there to be able to expand that far. But it was just as further development went down the, the street into the sub, it dumped more water, and that initial pipe that was laid down just wouldn't hold the volume that was needed.
This was a closed meeting. You can, once we close it, you can come up and ask us.
Mr. Vadoyn.
Yes, sir.
Pardon me. What we're seeing here, obviously, someone was asleep at the switch in terms of these widths of right-of-ways and allowing inadequate infrastructure to be put in for drainage. For the moment, putting that aside, what are we doing to prevent us from continuing this? What, when somebody, a developer comes in now and wants to put in infrastructure, are we holding his thumb to the fire?
Yes, I'm, I'm not for sure the exact date, but I know Joey Akabachi, I think I said that right, he's been doing great work on getting our code and our planning development standards to where it is written specifically on the plats. A lot of these plats showed that they were going to remain private roads, showed that they wouldn't be county-owned roads. That's how they got around it, is, well, I'm only going to do an eighteen-foot road. It's more of a road, access road slash horse path, and it's never going to be a county road, and then the sub develops, and more people get in. Next you know, you find that out of thirty, thirty lots, only about three of them are the original owners, and everybody wants the road to become county road because it's in board shape, and, you know, that's just, it's just kind of that, that snowball down the hill. So now, going forward, that we have it specifically, it is detailed on the plats, that if it isn't to our standard at the start, that it will never be a county road unless they get it to our standard.
Good. Good, that's an excellent answer. Let me compliment you on this presentation. It was very easy to understand. It's a nightmare.
It, it is. It can, it can be easily a death by PowerPoint.
Well, you did, you did very well.
Thank you.
There's a lot of research in it, and we appreciate it. One other thing, when, when people put a well in, own that right-of-way, if, if we were to get acquiescence from all of the people in a subdivision, who bears the expense of, treating that, capping it off, and then they have to provide themselves? And I'm assuming that's domestic water, not just irrigation.
So, so I don't see where that road is, can be serviced yet by an, an outside source. I don't think the third party that currently provides water service to a lot of that sub in mush bluff, I, I don't know at this point if they have the capacity to take on Timber Ridge. The problem is, and why a lot of those wells were located in the front of the properties is, because they had to have the standard distance from the septic fields. A lot of the, a lot of the septic fields had very limited areas that they could be put in because of the way the, the floodplain was in that area. So it really forced them to put those, those wellheads really close to the right-of-way of the roads. And that, and that's, you know, I heard a lot of people, you know, I've talked to a lot of people about it, and they say, oh, it was always established as a sixty-foot right-of-way, and it was always established that the county was supposed to take it on, and I can agree to them that it shows on the plot that it was a sixty-foot right-of-way, but what's out there and what's actually out on the properties, I don't see how the county would ever have allowed somebody put a wellhead within the right-of-way of the road. It just, it's just the liability.
And one final question. In all of this surveying these properties, did you get the sense that there's any one or two of these neighborhoods, that there is unanimous agreement, and somebody, and this particular street or neighborhood is ready to move forward with, you know, the, all of them committing and letting us do the...
So I've been here six months. I haven't actively gone and done surveys myself. The three major surveys that I found that Shalena put through over the last year, the previous director, we couldn't get any of the three to completely agree. Every one of them had at least one holdout, if not two. A lot of times, and it's unfortunate, some of these lot owners are through a trust, and as you can, as you would imagine, you know, you put six, eight, sometimes four people together that own a piece of property, and you can't get all four of them to agree just on that property alone. I know on Timber Ridge, that's, that's one of the people that, that weren't sure and did not want to acquiesce, was that they were a trust on a property, in that the well, and their biggest concern was that they didn't want to give up property that their wellhead was on.
Yes.
And that, and that was specifically an issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any commissioners got any more questions?
I don't.
All right. Reason why you can't speak right now, this is not a public hearing, so. All right, if no commissioners have any more questions, we'll close it. We're done.[1391.35]
Welcome to tonight's special called meeting. We'll have the invocation by Commissioner Goodman and join us for the pledge.
Stand, gentlemen, remove your covers, please.
That's a military term for caps. I'm going to say a few words and then I want us to do something, not to be evangelical about it, but I'd like for us to pray the Lord's Prayer together in unison. I believe in the power of corporate prayer, prayer. So I'll start this by saying, Father, we thank thee for the opportunity to meet and deliberate tonight. Help us make wise decisions. Bring a healing to this nation for the things that we're going through. Pray that we make the right decisions and that we move forward. And in the words that were delivered through your son, our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thou wilt be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Provide us the kingdom and the power and glory forever. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, ever and ever, just as it is now.
Good choice. Yes, sir.
All right. Now, we need to adopt the agenda. Is there any amendments to the agenda? Here are none. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Second.
Got a first and second to adopt the agenda as presented. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, this brings us to our first public comment section of the night. We're limited to agenda items only in three minutes, but I will say one thing. If we adopt what is proposed, the millage rate will be lower than what it was in 2014. And we've lowered the millage rate, this will be four years in a row. Anybody registered? Katie?
Not for the first.
Anybody wish to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll dive right on in. All right, Nancy?
Good evening, Commissioners and Chairman. This agenda item is for the adoption of the millage rate, and I do have a short presentation that I'd like to go through. Hold on just one moment. So this first slide is a depiction of the tax digest and the millage rate for the past 10 years. The lowest the millage, or excuse me, the lowest the digest had gotten was in 2016, which was 1.25 billion, and it's currently 2.27 billion dollars. And the 1.25 billion in 2016, that was after several years of reduction after the Great Recession in 2008, 2009, and that was a reduction of 30%. So it's really come back from that point. And that is the blue line, and the green line is the millage rate for the past 10 years. And tonight, we're proposing a millage rate of, the rollback rate, of 12.1 mills. And the highest the millage rate has been for countywide taxes was in 2019 and 2020, and that was 15.79 mills. So at this point, since 2019 and 2020, this is a 23% reduction in the millage rate. And again, it is the lowest it's been since 2014. This is a chart of the general fund, fund balance history, and fund balance is the county reserves. And you could see in 2018, 2019, those were the lowest that I've seen in that period of time. So this is the last 10 years, and we've built it back up to 17.5 million as of the end of fiscal year '24, which was June 30th, '24. And that's approximately 38 or 39% of the current budget. So this is a property tax analysis of both the countywide taxes and the unincorporated. So if you're looking in the section that's headed with the yellow highlight, the gross digest, we started at 3 billion, and the exemptions were 748 million, so our net taxable digest was $2,267,000. The rollback rate, which is being proposed, is 12.1, and that'll generate taxes of about 27.4 million. And just estimating a 98% collection on that, we would expect to collect about 26 point, almost 26.9 million dollars. And in that 1 million, or 1 mill equals $1,000, that equates to 1 mill equals $2,222,496. On the other column, for the unincorporated rollback, 1.121, we're starting with a gross digest of 910 million, with exemptions of 290 million for a net digest of 799,000. So that would generate taxes of about 694,000. At 98% collection, we would expect about 680,900 dollars, and that equates to 1 mill And that was from the county's perspective of collecting taxes. This is from the perspective of the homeowner paying taxes. The top part is the countywide taxes, and using the 2024 rollback rate of 12.1, on a $200,000 house, we take 40% of that to come up with a fair market value of $80,000, which is the taxable portion. And then there's a $4,000 homestead exemption that gets applied to that, so the taxable value comes to 76,000. With a millage rate of 12.1, that's a tax levy of approximately $920. And there's also other things that are, other exemptions that apply to many people in the county, such as the local freeze, and that went into effect in, it was passed in 2006, so I believe it went into effect in 2007. So if you're living in that same home and your taxable, or excuse me, if your assessed value has gone up over the years, you're still being taxed at the rate that it was at that point, the lowest rate over that period of time. So this doesn't, this chart doesn't really reflect that. This is just saying that you have just the basic homestead exemptions. And then that's using the 12.1 mills, which is being proposed, but if the current rate, we went into this with 13.139, and that would have generated $999 in taxes, so it's a $79 savings there, or reduction. And the bottom part is for the unincorporated tax district, and again, using a $200,000 home, and that comes down to a taxable value of 76,000, and applying a millage rate, which is the rollback rate of 1.121, it would be a tax levy of $85. And to the right of that, if you compared it to the current rate from 2023, that would have generated $92, so that was a $7 reduction. And this is going through our budgets and what the expectation for the collections were at budget time compared to what it would be if we adopted the 12.1 mills. So the middle column for the current budget, for the ad valorem timber vehicles and mobile home taxes, we were budgeting $27,946,000. We have other revenues of approximately 18.6 million, and we currently have a budget of 798,224 for fund balance use. So that gave us total revenues of $47,330,854. So our expenses are that exactly. So we're, as you go down the chart, our, the FB is for fund balance, our current fund balance, which is unaudited, we're working on an audit right now, but going into this fiscal year, it was almost 17.5 million. We budgeted 798,000 of fund balance use, so we were projecting that we would be bringing the fund balance down to $16,681,000, or 35% of the current budget. Now, going into the budget year, we don't know what the digest is, we don't know what the millage rate is going to be. So by applying what it actually is, applying that 12.1 mills to the ad valorem timber vehicle and mobile home, we would be generating $26,892,000 in property taxes. Other revenues remain the same at the 18.6 million, our fund balance that we had budgeted. So our revenues were $46,276,723. Our expenses stay the same, so we would need an additional $1,054,000 to, of fund balance use to balance the budget. So by rolling back the rate, we still need to balance that budget, and that would be our fund balance use. So if we look at the beginning balance of fund balance, 17,479, we take out the 798 we already had budgeted, and an additional $1,054,000, our projected fund balance for fiscal year '25 would be down to $15,627,000, or 33% of the current budget. And that still is above what our policy aims to have a 25% or higher balance. So it is above that percentage. And this is the same analysis on the unincorporated tax district. So that middle column, our total revenue and other revenue sources are $3,768,000. And our, going into the fiscal year, we would have one, almost $1.6 million in fund balance, and we currently have budgeted use of fund balance of 424,695. So that would project, leaving us with $1,171,000 at the end of the current fiscal year. And by rolling back the millage rate, we would need, on the right-hand side, you could see that we would need an additional $27,108 to balance the budget. So that would reduce the bottom line fund balance to $1,144,000. And we don't have restrictions on the unincorporated tax district of a percentage of fund balance, but just for informational purposes, we would still have 30% in the unincorporated. Our policy is written more for the general fund, but it's also good to have reserves in these other funds. So in summary, the general fund millage rate, we would be taking the full rollback to 12.1 mills, and that's a 7.91% reduction from the prior year. And the unincorporated millage rate, a full rollback of 1.121, which is a 7.13% reduction from 2023. And then also the incorporated Woodbine Fire District millage rate, and we're proposing 1.361 mills. It's been that for quite some time. I think for probably 10 years, it was 1.4, and then it was dropped down to 1.361, and we've really kept it and tried to keep it there for those residents. And that's the conclusion.
Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
All right, can I get a motion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget as presented, the millage rate as presented. Millage rate, excuse me.
I'll second that and open it for discussion. Anybody got anything to say? I know we gotta kind of look toward the future. We're gonna have to build a new jail, so having a healthy fund balance will help with that. And also, you know, this past August, you know, you get hit with a, or October, you get hit with a hurricane, you would need some funds, so it's good to have a rainy day fund for stuff like that as well. All right, we got a first and a second. All in favor? All right, motion carries. We have set the millage rate. All right, next item, Nancy.
Okay, so the next agenda item is the approval to set the annual 2024 millage rates for the Camden County Board of Education. Their millage rate for 2023 was 15.25 mills. The state required rollback was calculated at 14.044 mills, and the state of Georgia requires the Board of Commissioners to adopt the school board's millage rate as set by the school board's meeting. So the digest had been properly advertised. You have in your packet the millage rate resolution, and the Board of Education had adopted a millage rate for 2024 of 15 mills at its October 31st meeting. So we're requesting approval of that millage rate.
All right, can I get a motion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the school board's millage rate at 15 mills.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Got a first and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, do I need to recuse myself as a school board employee?
Jack, I wouldn't think so.
Not in this capacity, sir.
Now, I will say one thing is, we could turn it down, but the school board would probably sue us, and they would get their rate anyway. All right, we got a first and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, next item.
So this next agenda item is just the certification of the millage rates that were just adopted, and it's another required form by the state of Georgia. And just to recap the rates, the countywide rate is 12.1 mills, the countywide school rate is 15 mills, and the unincorporated tax districts are 1.121, and the Woodbine Service District is 1.361. So we're requesting approval and certification.
All right, can I get a motion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to certify the annual 2024 millage rates as presented. Second.
Got a first and a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? We'll certify the millage rates for 2024.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy.
Good evening, Commissioners. This agenda item is for your consideration to approve the purchase of furniture for the new Public Health Department from VIP Office. Purchasing received a quote from VIP Office with state contract pricing through Omnia Partners and Global Tips for office furniture. The quote for VIP Office came in at $57,627.54. Staff recommends approval to purchase the new Public Health Department furniture from VIP Office.
Can I get a motion on this item?
Make a motion to approve the purchase of the furniture for the Health Department.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? So you have no discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. We'll buy some furniture. All right, next item.
This agenda item is for your consideration to approve the purchase of medical equipment for the new Public Health Department from Henry Schein. Purchasing received a quote from Henry Schein with state contract pricing through Omnia Partners for medical equipment. The quote for Henry Schein came in at $106,998,49. Staff recommends approval to purchase the new Public Health Department medical equipment from Henry Schein. Thank you.
And all this is coming out of splotched funds?
Yes.
Can I get a motion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the purchase of the Public Health Medical Equipment for the new Health Department.
Second.
Got a first and a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. All right, this brings us to our final public comment period tonight. We're limited to three minutes. Anybody registered?
Yes, sir.
Rick Manning from Bullhead. Let's start off on a good note. I don't see Joey here, but Joey Yakabaki, one of the best employees in this county. We had some controversy going on with that toxic well that they're trying to put some toxins down, what they did. Anyway, Joey got it straight for not only Camden citizens, but Brantley citizens, after they have tried several months. They contacted me, I contacted Joey, and he contacted all of us. I'd like to thank him. Now, let's get on. Rezoning at the gun range. This has been going on for almost three years now, folks. Ah, that ain't me. But anyhow, the rezoning at the gun range, you know it's been illegal all this time. Why y'all even approved it, I have no idea. And now you're already asking for a special permit for the range at the same time. I went to view the documents associated with it, they're not ready yet. Don't ask me why, and I was told I'd have to turn in a open records request to get the copies of the documents. Anyways, y'all opening up a can of worms, I don't know what your legal department's telling you, but you've been out of compliance with county codes, county zoning, and state laws. I've been telling you all this, I've been documenting it, and all of a sudden, when you find out investigations going on, whoa, we're gonna try to fix this. Well, you open it, like I said, you open it up a can of worms. Everybody in this county can get away with whatever they want to. You might as well take the UDC book, throw it out the window, because the county is no different than the rest of us. You have to follow your own UDC codes, you have to follow zoning, you have to follow state laws. But if you go ahead and approve this, especially you ain't even fixed what I asked you to. You know, this shouldn't have been a controversy to begin with. I asked y'all to fix the noise ordinance and do something, but no, instead you decided to attack me. So then I started bringing out all this stuff that you would know was illegal. Mr. Chairman, you approved the building of that in June of 2017. Co-chair, he's second in motion. Anyways, you know, y'all gonna open this up, y'all can't enforce any UDC codes, zoning codes, nothing, because you're breaking them, and here you are, you're admitting it right here. So anybody can do anything in this county without any repercussions or accountability, and then come back after the fact if they get caught and say, look, y'all gotta approve this because you have done it for yourself. What a kind of a county are we running here, folks? So anyways, you know that investigation's going, criminal investigation, y'all voted in if you want to, that's just one more thing I'm gonna charge you with. And, you know, I've heard one of you say you didn't want to go to jail. Well, y'all, every time you vote to approve a budget for something illegal, you've done something, you took it upon yourself knowingly and willingly breaking laws and codes. But have a nice day.
Anybody else registered? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
I just need some clarification about school taxes. I'm coming. I talk loud, anyway.
Okay, Denise Kurtik, Camden County, former educator. On the taxes, I went to the meetings that we had a few weeks ago, and they were explaining it, but it wasn't really clear. You know, what is the present millage rate for the school system? That's what, you know, I need to know, and I know some of these other folks are probably want to know the same thing, so what is the current? And are you adding the 6.81% or how is that going?
After, after we get done, you can meet with us and we'll go over it with you.
Okay, I, you know, and I've had folks ask me, you know, what is all of it for? I said, I don't know. I don't know, but you know...
But I understand the school board has to keep their millage rate at a certain percentage in order to keep getting federal funds.
Okay.
But we can sit down and go over with you.
I will meet with you. Thank you.
Ms. Denise, what's your last name for the record? We missed your last name, I'm sorry. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Anybody else? Come on up, sir.
My name's John Liliston. Spoke with Mr. Collins over there regarding the debris pickup for the private communities. And I know that the county got money from the government for storm cleanup, and Mr. Collins and I have discussed it, and he said that that money couldn't be used on private communities, which I know to be false, because during Matthew and Irma, Glynn County used that money to help my community that I lived in at the time. that money to help my community that I lived in at the time. So anyway, I want to suggest that y'all relook at that. I know there's going to be a change in the guard come tomorrow, but you need to represent all the people. We in private communities, I live in Sanctuary Cove, 800 properties, we pay 800 properties' worth of property tax. We should get that same benefit of the county receiving federal money. I'm not saying come in and clean up our property after a hurricane if the county doesn't receive money, but if you got money, that goes to all of us taxpayers. And y'all need to be representing all of us. And Mr. Collins said that there's no, he initially, after he told me FEMA would not address it, or would not provide money for that, he called me back within five minutes, said, I apologize, I was wrong. Then he said, we don't have an agreement between the county and your HOA. I said, well, let's get one. I'll get the HOA on board, and you get the county on board. I didn't hear back, so I called, left a couple messages, finally came down here and stood at the window, and the lady promised me he'd call me back. He did. He told me the county's digging in their heels, and they're not going to take care of it. Well, this is a call to all you people out here that aren't getting serviced, and all you people that live on dirt roads that don't have paved roads. Make these people pay. That's what we pay taxes for. We don't pay any less taxes because you guys didn't pick up our debris that the federal funds went to help. And just like the people on Lampadoja Road, they don't pay any less taxes for comparable property because they don't have a paved road in front of their house. It's only fair. I'm going to suggest to y'all, if you haven't read the United States Constitution, read it, because I know that's part of the oath that you take when you're installed in that seat. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? All right, here are none. We'll have a motion for adjournment.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I will kind of just state one thing. We have not received any federal funds for the recent storms that we have had. In fact, we are still, and Nancy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're still collecting on Matthew and Irma. We still have not been fully reimbursed for that, and even then, we're not fully made whole. There's quite a bit of that money that we spent that--
We did get it in the last--
We got Matthew? Okay, okay, good. But it's taken, it takes years.
Takes years, yes.
Yeah, we won't see anything for Helene or Debbie for probably another five or six years.
It's a reimbursement. It just takes a lot of time to get back.
Hopefully.
That's what Mr. Collins told me. Let's set the record straight. We're anticipating money coming to the county for this training. Am I right?
We'll talk to you in just a minute.
Oh, no, no, no. We want sunshine, break it along.
The meeting is adjourned.
We already adjourned the meeting, so. You can come up and talk to us now, but the meeting's over.
I'm looking forward to the next four years coming here, because I'm going to make sure I get what we're looking for.
Okay.